Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Williamson County School Board meeting for February 19th. There's a few things I wanted to announce before we actually record our attendance. One is the board voted as a policy change to change the order of the agenda. You'll see a slight change in the order this evening as we go through. Also, we have some people with us this evening that we'll get to in just a minute. So, Board members, if you'd go ahead and record your attendance at this time, please. Okay, Brian, we have 11. Okay, we have 11 of us are here this evening. We have with us this evening a few representatives. We have a Scope representative. Scope stands for Student Congress on Policies and Education. It's a Tennessee School Board Association program put together for students to come together and look at actual board issues for statewide. And then they go through this meeting over at MTSU, I think it's the first Saturday in March. And we have, for this is the first year we've had every school, every high school in our district has had at least one representative going, so we're really proud of that. And I know we have some in the audience this evening, so you can either stand up and I can embarrass you, or you can kind of wave, or you can just, there you go. Okay, there, thank you very much. Thank you for being here. We also have with us this evening a big group of scouts. And Assistant Scout Master Scott Johansson is with the Brentwood Boy Scouts Troop Eight, and they are all here to fulfill their communication merit badge requirements. So what we're going to have them do is to come up front with our two officers, I mean deputies, Scott Brogdon and Matt Erickson, and we'd like to ask you all to come up front and please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So scouts, if you'd come up front and join Deputy Scott Brogdon and Matt Erickson, and we're going to have you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. After we do the pledge, we will have a moment of silence, so please remain standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, scouts from Troop Eight in Brentwood. We appreciate you being here and leading us in the pledge. I hope that was good enough to get you your badge. Did that work? Okay, good. All right, the next item, and this is part of the change of the board policy, is items of particular public interest. It's the public comments section, and we have a list that we post before the meeting, and we have two people who have signed up to speak this evening. We ask for three minutes for each person to speak. When the person comes up, as I read your name, please state where you live and what your subject is. And the first person is Judy Solon.
Good evening. My name is Judy Solon, I live in Franklin, and I'm here to talk about school start times. I want to share with you tonight a little bit of the conversation I recently had with Scott Siegfried, the Deputy Superintendent of the Cherry Creek School District in Colorado. Cherry Creek recently went through a successful seven-month change management process with their community, which resulted in new bell times this year. High school changed from a 7:10 a.m. to an 8:20 start, middle from 7:50 to 8:50, and elementary from 9 a.m. to 8 a.m. Mr. Siegfried is very willing to speak about their change process and would be very happy to talk with any of you, too. So I asked him, what would you say to superintendent, staff, and school board contemplating start time change? And here are some of his responses. These are the biggest and best changes we will ever make for kids. I have visited with 11th and 12th graders who were in tears, saying this is the best thing that's ever happened to them. Students aren't staying up later, they are sleeping in. They can choose to get up earlier to do homework, but they are not forced to get up early now. You could ask any of the high school kids in the district, and they would be passionately in favor of this change. In other words, starting teens later is a life-changing intervention. Dr. Looney's recent performance evaluation noted that he felt one of his biggest accomplishments last year was personally convincing 17 students to not drop out of school, and that is great. Just imagine how many dropouts might be saved if high school started later and better-rested students arrive on time and ready to learn. Just imagine how life-changing this would be for thousands of students year after year, to not be chronically sleep deprived, to feel less anxiety and depression, to be better able to focus and perform, and to be more alert behind the wheel. Dr. Looney has said start times will be revisited in March or April. I ask that rather than making any small incremental change, make no changes for next year. Instead, commit to making a big change in start times for the 2019-2020 year. Take the time between now and then to involve the community in preparing for the change. At a recent board retreat, Dr. Looney was asked, in an ideal world, when would you start school? He said he would start everyone at 8 a.m. Now, in reality, we can't do that, but shouldn't at least one group of students start at 8 a.m.? Shouldn't the youngest, most alert students go first, having on-time bus service without pickup or drop-off beyond civil twilight? If you think about it, starting elementary at 8 and secondary after is a win-win for students. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jane McGrath.
My name is Jane McGrath, and I live at 9036 Lockmere Court in Brentwood. I came tonight to speak about three things. First of all, I would like to encourage you, Dr. Looney is coming to you tonight, about online classes. Now that I have a high schooler, of course, this impacts me greatly because, of course, she's all into the arts and theater and band and choir, and we can't give up any of it. But we also have to get in all of the necessities as well. So we are trying to fit in as much as we can in the time that we have. And I do believe that online classes would be very helpful to not only students who find themselves with an overloaded schedule, or some students that tend to be medically fragile or easily get sick, or students who may not fit into the typical high school experience, such as some students who go to Renaissance High. Renaissance High is great, but they only can hold 160 students, and they often, almost always, have a waitlist as well. So I would like to encourage you to please approve and move forward with the online classes so that we can be innovators in Tennessee and not followers. The second thing I'd like to do is to thank Dr. Looney. Thank you for taking today to work with everyone in Williamson County schools to look over the policies and procedures for the what-if, and what if something like that were to happen. So thank you for the in-service today, but as a parent volunteer at several schools, is there a possibility that we could have some sort of in-service training? Could we do something on, at the local schools that we volunteer at, just so that we know what to do in that situation? Because as parents ourselves, we would not hesitate to jump in front of kids to save them or cover them. And, you know, as a former teacher myself, I've had to think about that several times as well. So that would be something that I would encourage, maybe more communication, maybe more opportunities for us as parents who are often in the building to help, have those opportunities as well. Because often, we're answering phones or at the front desk, and that often puts us in the front line of fire. Thirdly, as most folks, I'm processing all the emotions that go along with this last week, but in truth, you know, the anger and grief and frustration we all feel, more of that doesn't solve anything. Unfortunately, I don't have a magic wand to wave and fix all the negativity, anger, and hatred and frustration in this world, but the thing I do have is a positive attitude. In many of the books and articles and different things I've been reading, from Dale Carnegie to Tony Robbins to many other authors, a lot of them have a common in theme. What you focus on is what you will become. So I'm choosing to be positive, and I'm choosing to, going to set that example for my children and everyone I come in contact with each day. And unfortunately, right now, it just feels like there's a very thick blanket of negativity on all of us, just from life in the world being as it is. So my choice is to be positive, and I challenge you to do the same. Thank you.
That ends our speakers for this evening. The next item, Board members, is the approval of the agenda. Dr. Looney has requested that we add Item 7A4. That's a new item on this agenda, and it is a resolution amending the 2017-18 General Purpose Budget for Safety and Security Specialist. Just want to make you aware of that before we actually vote on it. That is a new item added that Dr. Looney has requested that we consider this evening. So I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the agenda. We have a motion for Ms. Cleveland. I'd like to second that. Okay, we have a second from Mr. Welch. Any discussions, questions? Okay, I see none. This is a voice vote, is that right, Brian? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, carries. The next item that is a change is the approval of the Consent Agenda. In the past, when we approved their whole, the regular agenda, the Consent Agenda items were approved at the same time. Based on the most recent board policy adjustment, we now actually vote on the Consent Agenda items. So I'd like to ask for a motion on the Consent Agenda. We have a motion for Ms. Emerson. We have a second for Mr. Mitchell. Any discussion, comments, or questions on this one? Okay, this is a voice vote as well. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Hear none. On the Consent Agenda, we approved the January 18th, 2018 School Board Meeting Minutes. We approved the recommendation for field trip fee requests. We approved the Fairview High School replacement of softball and baseball scoreboards. We approved the Nolansville High School softball storage shed. We approved Page High School cafeteria lease with Daily Church Incorporated, and we approved Ravenwood High School installed storage shed at the practice football field. Our next item is communications to the board. Dr. Looney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, it's so good to see you this evening, and thank you for your attendance. I'd like to begin by just reflecting and talking a little bit about today's events, and also share with you a letter that I have written to parents that was delivered by email this afternoon, and talk about next steps in light of where we currently find ourselves. And I want to start by saying this. I truly believe that our schools are safe. We have comprehensive safety plans in place that our folks have been working on and tweaking the entire time that I've been here. Every year, there's a new iteration with new best practices that are shared that are then filtered down to the schools. I don't think the sky is falling here. I don't think that our students should be afraid to come to school, nor should our employees be afraid to come to work. I believe that we have great schools. Our Sheriff's Department, through the support of the County Commission and led by the mayor, provides SROs in all of our buildings who do a great job of building relationships with our students and our faculty members and even our parents. So I just want us to remember the context of where we are. But having said that, it's also trying times. Seventeen students lost their lives within the last seven days due to a school shooting. And it's not just a potential school shooter, but it's also any type of tragedy that might find its way to a school, whether it's a tornado, an earthquake, a fire, a death of a faculty member, or a death of a student because of an accident, or even a school shooting. So with your support, as you know, we didn't have school for students today, but instead, we had our 6,000-some-odd employees gather in their home, school, work location, or their schoolwork location, I should say, and review their safety plans, the in and outs of it, to become as familiar as they possibly could. And they did a great job, from all accounts I've heard. Then we all gathered, 6,000-plus of us in one location. It was a humbling experience because that's the first time in my tenure we've had everybody in one room, and boy, it's a lot of folks. Unfortunate that we were there to talk about safety rather than celebrating something else, but at the end of the day, I think today was a productive and a good meeting. It was a reminder of how important it is to provide for basic necessities for students and employees, and that is safety first and foremost. And because of that, we are committed to a three-pronged improvement process. We have some short-term goals that will go into effect tomorrow morning, when school begins. We have some midterm goals of things that we're working on in the short term or in the midterm, and then we have some long-term strategies to improve, and some of those require some capital improvements. Because the buildings that we built 30 and 40 years ago weren't designed with thinking about school shooters and secure entrances, and, you know, we have all these doors and ways to get in and out of campuses, so we need to rethink some of that. We also need to rethink how we build schools in the future, about how do we analyze and think about how to best secure the precious resource that we're privileged to serve every day. So tomorrow morning, with your permission, I just want to give you a list of things that are going to be different tomorrow morning, to let people know what to expect. Some of these things have been in place to varying degrees at varying schools. Honestly, we kind of get satisfied, and we lose our focus sometimes because we have so many things we're working on. So this is a reminder of what our process has been, and a commitment to enforce the policies and practices that we have in place at all schools. And so first, I want to let all of our visitors that come to campus, you're welcome, we would like to have you, but you will not be able to enter our building without a photo ID. That's a non-negotiable. No photo ID, no entry. You'll need to state your reason for being there and sign in properly so that we know your name, we can read your name and the time that you're in, and that we can track the time that you leave. We will standardize at all schools, building entry processes and guest tracking. We will expect all of our district employees to wear district-issued identification badges. We've been doing that for a number of years, but yesterday I printed 400 of them, so it needed to be revisited. One of the challenges that we have is we have so many doorways, so we are committed to securing all exterior doors to limit public access to the main doorways. And this will include a strict prohibition against propping doors open for convenience' That includes during-school and after-school hours for events. And then finally, we've been working with our SROs and their leadership team, and we are committed to assisting them and making sure that they're more visible, both inside and outside the building at all times. And so while there is an office space for them to secure items and to monitor cameras, their primary function moving forward will be to wear out their shoes by walking around. So tomorrow morning, those are things that you will immediately see. I have arranged for a parent meeting on March 6th at 6:00 p.m. to unveil the second phase or the second portion, the midterm goals that we will implement before the end of the year. And then I will be bringing to you some budget items to look long-term about how we do even more to protect and secure our campuses for our students and our staff members. Once again, I want to make sure everybody understands, we have comprehensive safety plans in place. Our system is not broken, it just needs to be revisited, revitalized, and reinforced. I have asked the teachers today and the administrators today that I met with for several hours, for tomorrow morning, first thing, when students show up, to meet with our students, to provide them with some discussion points, and to enlist their help in making sure our schools are as safe as they can be. The theme that we walked away from today was this. If you see something, say something. Don't let a concern or a fear pass by. There is nothing wrong with saying something if you see something. And I am absolutely convinced that together, we can continue to provide a safe learning environment where our students and employees can prosper. With that being said, I want to move on to the balance of my report, and I am going to enlist the help of Mrs. Carol Birdsong, who is dressed like a zebra today. And you look like a very agile and capable Z-Rod.
Stop all your head, Dr. Looney. Okay.
Carol, do you want me to turn his mic off?
Please, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. In case you all do not know our vision, that is our vision. We try to share that before every board meeting, as our lead-in into our student spotlights. And we are excited tonight to be celebrating the success of five students who earned perfect scores for their ACT composite. So parents, if you are in the building and watching this, you may want to get your cameras ready, because we are going to start with Hudson Staggs. So Hudson, if you will come up with Dr. Calton. Parents, please come on up and get a good photo of your child. This is a great accomplishment. And we are honoring Hudson for his performance on the December test. Did Shauna get here, Mr. Eubanks?
Neither.
Cena, I'm sorry. Oh, Cena, you are here. You're back here. Come on up, Cena. My apologies for mispronouncing your name. Cena earned a perfect composite ACT score on the December test as well. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, thank you, Mr. Mitchell. There's Cena's picture. Cena goes to Franklin High School. And next, from Independence High School, Brent Lane. And Dr. Kurt Jones. And Brent earned his score in the November testing period. Because we also have Sean Smith from Independence, who could not be with us tonight. I don't think Sean's here. Sean, are you here? No. And Sean made a perfect score on the December test. And also Brendan Goodbred from Ravenwood earned a perfect score on the November test, and he could not be here with us as well. Congratulations to all those students who scored perfect on the ACT. Now we want to celebrate volunteerism. This is Sydney Floyd. Sydney is a Woodland Middle School student. She is representing the entire state of Tennessee in the Prudential Spirit of Community Awards, and from what I can remember, we have never had a middle school student win this award for the state. So congratulations to Sydney. But what is also doubly cool about this is we have the top volunteer in the high school division as well, and this is Zachary Wolfson from Franklin High School, who is the Prudential Spirit of Community Award winner for all Tennessee high schools. They will go on and compete at the national level. Congratulations to everyone tonight.
Mr. Chairman, my final comment would be a word of gratitude to all those folks that made today happen. Mr. Golden, Ms. Hagan, board members who were able to attend, the bus drivers that transported employees, all law enforcement officials. You can imagine that pulling more than 6,000 people together within about 96 hours is quite a feat, and it went off seamlessly. So thank you for all those individuals that made today happen. That completes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Looney. Do you have any questions for Dr. Looney? I see none. Okay, thank you. The next item is the Board Chairman's Report, and Board members, I want to remind you that this Saturday, we have our budget work session to work on our budget for next year. 7 o'clock, Dr. Looney has promised to feed us like royalty, I think it's cereal?
Twice daily biscuits.
Twice daily biscuits, okay. And then we're going to actually start the breakfast at 7, and then we start the meeting at 7:30 or as early as possible to get through this. As you know, it's quite an extensive journey to go through the budget development process and then our approval process, and so we take this extremely seriously. So if you would please make sure that you can come Saturday morning, and if you can't, if you would just let us know ahead of time so we know not to wait on you like we would wait on you. All right, next item is unfinished business. We have none, so we move right into new business, and it's the 2017-18 School Board Budget, General Purpose School Fund, Intercategorie Transfer, Human Resources Department. Dr. Looney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, I do recommend approval of this intercategory transfer of $46,900.
Okay, anyone like to make a motion on that? We have a motion for Mr. Cash. We have a second for Ms. Durham. Any discussion on this item? Okay, and that is your recommendation, right, Dr. Looney?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if you go ahead then, record your votes.
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Thank you. Next item is Central Cafeteria Fund Amendment for Cafeteria Needs. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, this amendment to the budget is needed because of an increase in consumption of food, and so we need you to approve this. It is a self-sustaining fund.
Okay, anyone like to make a motion on that? We have a motion for Ms. Garrett. Anyone like to second it? We have a second for Ms. Emerson. Any further discussion on this one? Okay, I see none. Dr. Looney, it's your recommendation?
Yes, sir.
All right, if you go ahead then, record your votes, please.
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Thank you, Board members. Next item is 7A3, Extended School Program Fund Amendment, United Way ESP Grant. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, I do recommend approval of transferring and utilizing the $3,500 from the United Way grant.
Anyone like to make a motion on this one? Ms. Durham makes a motion, like to second it? Mr. Hall seconds it. Any further discussion on this one? Okay, I see none. If you'd go ahead and record your votes, please.
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Thank you. The next one is Resolution Amending the 2017-2018 General Purpose Budget for Safety and Security Specialist. I'd like to make a motion on, Dr. Looney, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, this is the new action item. In consultation with Mr. Fletcher and several staff members, we have determined that Mr. Fletcher needs some support to get his work done to maximize security for our campuses. I do recommend approval of this resolution.
We have a motion for approval, and we have a second for Ms. Cleveland. Okay, Mr. Wimberly.
I'd just like to say, some of you know I'm in the business of emergency management, and basically, when you're preparing for safety, there are three things that you have to do. One is you have to have a plan, which obviously- One is you have to have a plan, which obviously, we have a plan, and you're working real hard with the plan. The other is you have to have good communications, and that's getting better all the time. Pulling together 6,500 people is indicative of that. But the third one, and perhaps the most important, is having good stakeholder engagement. Because safety is not something that only people who wear badges can contribute to. And today, I saw the best example of stakeholder engagement that I've ever seen anywhere in the country. And that was, you had the mayor, who talked about the message that he could bring from the county commission, saying to our employees that, "We're going to make you safe. We're going to do what needs to be done to make you safe." He reminded us of, after Sandy Hook, how within 30 to 45 days, that we had money appropriated so that we could put school resource officers in every school. 30 to 45 days, that is lightning speed for us, or for any government. He also talked about the fact that they realized that our most important asset are the kids of our community, and expressed a strong commitment to doing what was right. You had a sheriff there, who brought in a representative of every law enforcement agency in the community, all enthusiastically engaged and involved in preparing for whatever comes down the pike. And I will tell you, this sheriff, when you mention schools and a problem, he gets into action. I've seen it before personally, and the candor that he spoke with, and the commitment that he conveyed was, I think, extraordinary. You even had the head of the juvenile courts, our judge, talk about things that she could do as a judge to help with the safety of our kids that perhaps we couldn't do. That was impressive. You had mental health experts there, and not to mention, you had a crowd of 6,500, best I could tell, very attentive and engaged people. This doesn't happen by accident. Stakeholder engagement is tough to accomplish. And I will tell you that the work that Mike Fletcher has done in getting the resources rallied, with the support of his superintendent, and his deputy superintendent, and a lot of others, is nothing short of extraordinary. So it's with great enthusiasm that I will support the motion to get him some help. He does an outstanding job, but it is a big job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wimberly. And thank you for the references to the meeting today. Very, very on point. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second, and a director's recommendation. If you go ahead and record your votes, please.
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no?
Thank you. The next item is the Intent to Fund Resolution for Buses. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members. We have bounced back and forth about how we handled the acquisition of additional buses in various years. This year, we will absolutely not have the fund balance to pay for it out of fund balance, so we'll make it a capital request to the commission. I recommend approval.
Okay, we have the director's recommendation, and I'd like to make a motion on this one. We have a motion for Mr. Mitchell, second for Mr. Cash. Any further discussion on the intent to fund on buses? Okay, I see none. Then if you go ahead and record your votes, please.
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no?
Thank you. The next item is Intent to Fund Resolution for Land. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members. As you know, we recently, our community has voted to support the construction and addition and expansion and improvements of campuses for the school district. And in keeping with our commitment to the commission and to the public, you will be presented with several resolutions tonight relating to funding for various projects. This first one is for land acquisition for the various campuses that we will need. The thinking being that if we have the money now, we could buy at a discounted rate, and we could actually strategically locate schools rather than waiting for developments to come, and then us reacting to those developments. So with your permission, we would like to move forward to the county commission with a funding request of $35,625,000 for land acquisition.
Okay, if anyone like to make a motion on that? We have a motion for Ms. McGraw. Anyone like to second it? Mr. Mitchell, second it. Any further discussion on this one? Okay, I see none. Then if you go ahead and record your votes, please.
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no?
Thank you, Board. The next one is the Intent to Fund Resolution for a Central Elementary School. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members. As you know, part of our five-year plan includes adding a new central elementary school at the cost of approximately $30 million. This represents half of that, which would allow us to begin the design work and all the site work. I will add that we have identified property, and we are currently assessing that property, the appropriate soil sampling and that sort of thing, to make sure it is suitable for construction. We do have a willing land owner. Mr. Golden can add any additional details. I will say, generally speaking, it is east of 65 in the central portion of the county, south-central portion of the county.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion on this one. We have a motion for Ms. Garrett, I'd like to second it. We have a second from Mr. Welch. Okay, any further discussion on this one? Ms. McGraw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Looney, based on what you just said a bit ago about some ongoing security, I just had assumed that, going forward, the elementary schools would follow the Clovercroft and Jordan design. Do you anticipate needing to make changes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so does that affect the estimate for this at any stage?
It will cost a little bit more in architect fees, but I don't know that it will cost additional construction dollars. Honestly, the Clovercroft design is a fairly secure building. We need to reconsider the main corridor. Other than that, we're probably in fairly good shape. We met today as a cabinets and talked about the need to revisit all the future plans of schools to make sure that we've had that additional box to check through about security.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, I see none. If you'd go ahead and record your votes, please.
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no?
Thank you, Board. The next item is the Intent to Fund Resolution for the Central Middle School Sewer. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members. Well, the good news, we already know where this school's going to go. The city of Franklin has partnered with us. They're paying 50% of the cost of sewer. They have begun the land acquisition, the right-of-way acquisition for the sewer project. We owe them money as part of that, and this helps us do that, along with some initial design work. Requested approval of this for the future middle school to serve the south-central section of the county.
Anyone like to make a motion on this one? We have a motion for Mr. Cash. Anyone like to second? Mr. Hawes, second. Thank you. Any discussion on this one? We have Mr. Welch.
Dr. Looney, the sewer that we're financing here, will this be used solely by the middle school, or will future developments also share of this sewer usage that we're...
Yes, thank you for your question. It's going to be a public sewer, so people will be attaching to it. I presume that eventually, the elementary school, Oakview Elementary School will attach as well. But there will be certainly people that have access to that sewer.
And this is a partnership, you said, between us and the city?
Yes, sir.
And so will the city be charging sewage fees, or sewer access fees? If I'm getting that terminology wrong, I apologize, to future developments that are built?
To future developments, I'm sure they will. For our schools to add on, it was part of the calculation of when we agreed to go 50-50.
So will we be sharing in that revenue?
No, sir, we won't.
So the city's asking us to subsidize the construction of it? They'll be using it for future developments? They'll be charging those future developments for sewer access, but not splitting the revenue from it?
Well put that way, yes, sir.
Dr. Looney, if I may, add a couple more facts related to that. They're doing all the construction work. It was not in their plan to extend this sewer towards Henbeck, because the development is generally not headed in that direction. And so the original position we were in was that we were going to have to do it 100% ourselves. So Dr. Looney had conversations with the city a year and a half ago or so, that led us to this point.
Thank you, Mr. McGraw.
Okay, Mr. Cash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This has been a long time coming, this sewer project. 35 acres is paid for, adjacent to Oakview Elementary School. It's been mentioned and re-mentioned for over a decade. And I would just like to thank those people that got so involved in this. Dr. Looney, and Mr. Golden, and the staff that sat down and had dialogue with all the people involved. You know, we've got to thank the county mayor, the city mayor of Franklin, the aldermen. And they understand how important it is now. But I'd like to thank this board, because, you know, we came together, and we have great dialogue, and we're making good decisions. And we need to do that tonight. But also, Rick talked about stakeholders. I know Ms. Garrett and Mr. Hoag, and myself took emails, telephone calls. We had meetings about this, and the stakeholders spoke. And there's going to be thousands of future students that go to that school, and they'll be able to stay in their own community. So I just wanted to thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Cash. Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to echo Mr. Welch's comments. I think he's... I agree with him that if we're helping fund the sewer, that we ought to mention to the city that there would be somewhat fair to share in the revenue of those tap fees that will be collected over the preceding years. I guess the second question I would have, though, is, is it the expectation that the elementary school will also connect on to that city sewer line once it's put there?
Yes, sir. I don't know that it will be immediate, but certainly, our plan is to add the elementary school to it.
So at a minimum, I would expect the city to waive any tap fees for that school to connect into it. But I would think it would be worth... I would appreciate it if there was some type of letter sent, that there was a couple of the board members that asked what would be the possibility of sharing in the tap fees of that sewer line going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wimberly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Mitchell, I guess I understand what you're saying, but I think that if we're going to make some communication to the city, that that should be done by the board, as opposed to a couple of individuals. And I'm not recommending that we do that.
Any further discussion on this one? Okay, I see none. If you go ahead and record your votes, then, please.
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no?
Thank you. The next item is the Intent to Fund Resolution for Grassland Middle and Sunset Middle School Auditoriums. Would anyone like to make... Well, Dr. Looney? We know we have someone who wants to make a motion, but go ahead, Dr. Looney, explain this one.
I feel the same as you. I recommend approval.
Okay, Ms. Emerson, did you want to make a motion on this?
Certainly. It's been a long time coming, and I am so excited that we're going to break ground on this finally. Yes.
Okay, we have a motion. Anyone like to second this motion?
Second.
We have a second, Mr. Wimberly. Any... Mr. Wimberly?
This has been in our plan since 2008, and we only have two schools left to do, in Sunset and Grassland. And certainly, I think all of us would like to see this happen. But, Dr. Looney, we have tonight a rather significant handful of intents to fund on our agenda that we're voting on. Is this... What's the reception going to be from the county commission, in your opinion, when they get all of these different items?
Well, Mr. Wimberly, I'm not a politician, but I think that residents...
Yeah, right.
I think the residents spoke to the county commission when they said, "Well, increase taxes," and I believe there's a clear expectation for these projects to move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we can all see from past history, especially out at Page Middle School, we've proved to the commission, beyond a shadow of a doubt, this is going to add classroom space that's much needed. And these principals and teachers are utilizing this space, believe me, every square inch of it. So this is well worth it, any way you want to look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments on this one? I believe Ms. Emerson did make a motion for this. No other comments? If you go ahead and record your votes, then, please.
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no?
Thank you, Board. Next item is the Intent to Fund Resolution for Independence High School Addition. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members. In keeping with your direction, we are making plans to expand the campuses of our high schools that have enough space, enough property, and architecturally, it's doable. And so we're proposing to expand the Independence High School campus, so that we can serve 2,200 students moving forward. This money here would allow us to begin the design work for that project.
Thank you.
Do recommend approval.
Thank you, sir. I would like to make a motion on that one. We have a motion from Mr. Wimberly. We have a second from Mr. Welch. Okay, any questions, comments, discussion? Okay, I see none. Then if you go ahead and record your votes, please.
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no?
Thank you, Board. The next one is the Intent to Fund Resolution for Fairview Middle School Renovation. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members. We're requesting $3.2 million to renovate Fairview Middle School, one of our oldest campuses.
Anyone like to make a motion on that one? Okay, we have a motion for Ms. Durham. Anyone like to second that? Mr. Welch seconds that motion. Any further discussion on this? Okay, I see none. Go ahead and record your votes on this one, please.
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no?
Thank you, Board. Dr. Looney, all these previous intent to funds have been really, really nice things about improvements of schools, and things that can be very visible. The next one is the Intent to Fund Resolution for Asphalt Projects. Would you like to discuss that one with us?
Yes, sir. It's either put asphalt down or pay for rims. We propose to put asphalt down.
Okay. Anyone like to make a motion on this one? We have a motion for Mr. Mitchell. We have a second for Mr. Cash. Any further discussions on this one? I see none. If you go ahead then, record your votes, please.
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no?
Okay, thank you very much, Board. We did go through a lot of intent to funds, a lot of millions of dollars there. For all you Boy Scouts in attendance tonight, you'll be paying the bill on those as you get older. All right, next item is the Adoption and Approval of Superintendent Goals. Dr. Looney, you want to talk about your goals?
Yes, sir. To finish the meeting quickly... I'm just kidding. I have proposed four goals with the assistance of Mr. Anderson. They're articulated in the document for you. I won't read them... I won't read them to you. I think they're reasonable, sensible goals tied to our strategic plan. I propose, I recommend that you approve the goals.
Anyone like to make a motion on these goals? Ms. Emerson's motion, anyone like to second it? Ms. Cleveland, second it. Any comments, questions, discussions on Dr. Looney's goals, which is part of his contract with the board? Okay, I see none. If you go ahead and record your votes then, please.
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no?
Okay, thank you. The next item is the family tuition rate for 2018-2019. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members. As you know, when families are intending to relocate into Williamson County and they have a contract on a home or a construction contract, we allow those families to go ahead and allow, we allow those families to bring their students to Williamson County in anticipation of the execution of their contract and the completion of their home. We allow that to happen by charging tuition. The tuition rate for the 2018-19 school year will be $7,077. The employee only pay the local property tax share of that, which would be $3,850. I do recommend the approval of this. This is consistent with the practice of this board for the last decade or so.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion on this item? We have a motion for Ms. Durham. Anyone like to second it? We have a second for Ms. Garrett. Any questions, comments, or discussions on this one? Okay, I see none. If you're ready to vote then, go ahead and record your votes, please.
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no?
Thank you, Board. Next item is the open zone schools for 2018-2019. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members. Board policy and the Tennessee legislature, the Tennessee Code 49 to 128, require us to open enrollment in schools that have foreseeable capacity. And so, staff has come up with a list of proposed open zoning schools and I do recommend approval of that. I will say that our parents are probably watching tonight and are more than ready to submit their documents for open zone. I do recommend approval.
Thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion on open zoning? We have a motion for Ms. McGraw. Anyone like to second that? We have a second for Mr. Mitchell. Okay, discussion on it? Mr. Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to thank Allison Nunley from the central office for many, many hours of work, lots of questions answered, a ton of analysis and forecasting that all gets synthesized to one simple document. And it belies how much work goes into it. And one of the things that came up a lot in the rezoning last year was looking for some flexible opportunities for folks in my district, in the south-central part of Franklin and that area. And I'd like to make an amendment to open the new Thompson Station Middle School to 25 students who are going to be zoned to Heritage Middle School and Page Middle School and as well as the recommendation of Spring Station Middle School.
Okay, we have an amendment. We need a second on that amendment. Mr. Welch, second it. Okay, any discussions on just the amendment then? Ms. Garrett, you had pushed your button. Did you want to talk on the amendment or?
No.
Okay. Anyone else like to speak that on the amendment? Mr. Welch?
Dr. Looney, do you have thoughts?
Yes, sir. As was discussed in the work session, I, as long as we don't go over the 25 total, I'm perfectly fine with Mr. Hall's recommended change.
Okay, Mr. Hall, your motion was for the, up to the 25?
Correct.
Okay. Any further comments or questions? Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Could I ask that we reread that amendment, please, just to make sure we're clear on what schools we're opening from and to?
Do you have it or?
Adding 25 students to the Thompson Station Middle School from Heritage Middle School, Page Middle School, and Spring Station Middle School.
Mr. Hall, is that your intent?
That's correct.
Or motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Emerson?
Thank you. I think that it's going to be difficult for a lot of the families that are already located, for instance, at Page. But I like that this offers some extended opportunities by allowing two more schools to be considered. Some of the parents that have kids at Page are quite a distance away from one or two of these selections and I think it makes it easier for them to provide the transportation that they need for the kids that they're going to have to provide to get their kids to and from school. So, thank you.
Okay, any other discussions on the amendment? Okay, and Dr. Looney, your recommendation?
Recommend approval.
All right. Board members, we'll be voting on just the amendment then at this time. If you go ahead and record your votes.
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no?
All right, thank you. Now, we're back on the amended main motion. Ms. Garrett?
Yes, just for the public that might be listening tonight, could someone explain why certain schools have open zone opportunities and why some don't?
Yes, ma'am. We traditionally, it's complicated, but essentially, we traditionally try to relieve overcrowded schools by opening vacant seats in neighboring schools where there's room. Secondly, a couple of years ago, the Tennessee Code changed that requires school districts to provide a listing of parents where there's capacity. That's challenging in Williamson County because we're growing so quickly. So, we try to forecast what future capacity is going to be and make smart decisions. So, those are the two primary reasons why we do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mitchell?
Similar to Ms. Garrett's request, can we, can I get you to explain when the forms will be available and what the process is to apply for open zone?
With your permission, I'm going to have Mr. Golden address that.
Certainly, and thank you for the question. Our forms will be online and from a process standpoint, parents can, first thing in the morning, print the form out, fill it out. That form explains that they take the form to the zoned school where they, where they are scheduled to be zoned this coming year, submit the form to the principal there, get it signed, physically take that form with them, and then go to the school where they intend to attend open zone, drop it off. And the principal there, at the, at the new open zone school, signs off on it. The office at that particular second school where they are intending to go, times and date stamps the application. And we use that for the, for the list of, and an example here, up to 25. The first 25 get, get the selection based on that. So, it's a, it's a first come, first served, up to the maximum that you all, as a board, choose based upon our recommendation. I do want to point out, and this is, this is actually being posted on our website as well, we have three schools that, that are construction sites right now. So, we don't have administrators at those schools, but our administrators have been hired. And so, I wanted to point out that Robert Boer, who is the, who's the, who's the principal at the new Thompson Station Elementary School, is holding his office at Bethesda Elementary. He's working from Bethesda. So, Bethesda Elementary will be the location to drop off to get him to sign if you, if you're looking to go there. Chad Walker is the incoming principal at Kenrose, I'm sorry, incoming principal at Jordan, and he is physically at Kenrose right now. And so, he'll be there in the morning. Paula Waits is the new principal at Thompson Station Middle School. Her office is at Summit High School right now. She's actually not going to be in tomorrow morning. We anticipate we'll have some drop-offs tomorrow morning. And the staff at Summit is aware of that and they will time and date stamp those applications.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Okay, I see none. Dr. Looney, this is your recommendation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then, board members, go ahead and record your votes, please.
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no?
Thank you, Board. Next item is school fees for 2018-2019. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members. Each year, we ask you to approve maximum fees. It doesn't necessarily mean that fees will be charged, but if they are charged with, they have to be charged within the limits that you set. I do recommend approval of the fee schedule for the 2018-19 school year.
Anyone like to make a motion on the school fees? Motion to approve? Mr. Wimberly? Mr. Welch, second. This is not the most popular item for board members to approve. Discussions, Ms. McGraw?
Thank you. I'm going to pretend I'm Jay Galbraith tonight and speak of school fees since he's not here. I've always voted in support of this and I still am tonight because the money has to go from somewhere, but I think this is a great example that the community needs to be aware of when we talk about how our schools don't have enough funding, that besides the six to nine million a year that our PTOs put in schools, we are asking parents to put in what averages around 1.1 million in taking classes. So, while the fees are voluntary, we attach academic fees for their students to take an academic class. And there are other fees in the schedule associated with sports and clubs and activities and I think everyone kind of agrees that that's the norm in public education, but we, we need supplemental income to have textbooks and educational supplies for basic courses and you can see the long list of courses here. So, I believe this used to be a temporary measure when we were in a budget situation quite a few years ago, and it's now become the norm where we just expect parents to contribute for their child's academic curriculum, materials in Williamson County. So, this is a great example. I'm voting to support it just because I know it won't, we need it in the budget and we thank those parents that contribute to it above and beyond what they're paying in tax dollars already.
Thank you. Ms. Garrett?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For those of us who represent the FSSD feeder zones, these fees can come as a surprise because FSSD has a different type of arrangement for class fees. And, Dr. Looney, I've heard you explain before kind of the history of the fees that Ann referred to. Could you tell us a little history of the evolution of our fee arrangements and why we have fees?
Well, I think Mrs. McGraw said it very well and that is, it's plugged budget gaps that we've had historically. And some schools use their site-based money or come up with other ways of providing supplies. These are voluntary fees, so people don't have to pay the fee in order to participate, but obviously, the fee is established to help pick up for the deficits that we have in classrooms to provide basic, basic learning material, whether it's, you know, an English notebook or a 3D art class where you need art material, et cetera. So, it's something that's been in place ever since I've been here. We have worked to reduce and eliminate as much as possible, but we're not there yet. To Mrs. McGraw's point, it's dead a little bit in excess of a million dollars.
Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Looney, I would ask, I guess, a question of you and your staff, that while I think Ms. McGraw made the point in our work session that we are the seventh wealthiest county in the country, we all know that there are students, many students in our district that are, that struggle to cover the cost of these fees. Are these fees prohibition to participation in any sports or, or activities, any of the classes, if they are unable to personally pay for the?
So, the answer for classes is no. If you don't pay the fee, you still get to take the class. As it relates to extracurricular activities, the answer is yes. In order, if you want to play, if you want to be on the cheer team, you have to pay the fee or raise enough money that covers the cost of the fee. And so, extracurricular activities, the answer is yes.
And do any of the schools, I guess, have facilities in which to assist in this? Say, in your example, if there is a student that wants to be on the cheer team and is economically unable to raise that money, is the, is, are there vehicles within the individual schools to help cover the cost of that? I mean, it really is, it was my expectation that you were going to give me an affirmative answer that, that even in the extracurricular activities, that these fees were not prohibitive for students that couldn't afford to pay for them. And so, I'm looking for hopefully some additional?
I, Mr. Elliott, Mr. Mitchell, I can't give you that assurance, to be honest with you. I would tell you extracurriculars require fees for participation. Now, I will tell you that every one of our programs that I'm aware of allows fundraising to be part of the mechanism and that, what that does is that lowers the fee schedule. But students will either need to fundraise or pay the fee to participate.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. McGraw?
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on that as I, I've had that question come up multiple times from parents and every response I've ever gotten when involving a principal to answer that question is they, they find a way. And every principal I've heard has said, we will make sure children can participate in the activities that they want to participate in. So, I, I feel comfortable that there's efforts being made by the community to let those kids participate because we are a generous community in fine ways, but I, that comes up a lot, a lot more than I thought it did.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Dr. Looney, at the risk of overcomplicating this, I want to point out one, one thing. When the schools work with students for fundraising activities, the students are not earning money for themselves to pay their fee. That becomes an IRS issue. Instead, if there's something like that worked out, it's, it's an agreement that, that a portion perhaps of the fee will be waived. Students are not earning money for themselves that they eventually turn back over to the school. I just wanted to make that critical distinction because of, because of tax issues.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. Mr. Cash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do, I agree with Ann and Ann Elliott on this, but again, I've had people call me and I've said, you know, call a principal, maybe they can help you out and work things out. But we need to know and people need to know, some of these sports and whatnot, cheer and hockey and stuff like that, that is real high-dollar stuff going in. And I don't know what, how much it is. I'm just kind of, just glancing at stuff, seeing, seeing the amount it costs to get in there, which is a factor also in this. So, I don't know if you could touch on that, Dr. Looney, or not, but that is one big factor with a lot of the different organizations that we deal with. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I certainly agree with the, the comments that have been made. Our principals and employees do a marvelous job to the extent that we can. Extracurricular activities are exactly that. They're extracurricular. And so, it's not illegal for a school to charge and to make students or their parents pay or, and/or fundraise. I can't tell you from a policy perspective that we have anything in place that guarantees that to happen. Now, I will tell you that there's a lot of things that happen behind the scenes that are not within policy that people make happen to take care of kids, not illegally, but they just figure it out. But there's nothing in our policy or there's no guarantee that I can give you that if a student wants to be in band and band is probably six to eight hundred dollars to be in the band, the marching band, as an example, you know, that, they're going to have to raise money because they go on all kinds of trips and it's expensive. And so, now, the good news is it's typically not a single student that's raising the money. It's usually everybody in the band and they kind of all do good for the, they, they work for the, for the good of the whole. But I think that the standard is, is that everybody has to do their fair share. And, Dr. Farmer, you may want to add it to that.
Like Mr. Golden said, at the risk of complicating, when you talk about club sports, I think, Mr. Cash, you mentioned maybe like hockey, you know, we, that's separate. We don't, we don't worry about what they charge. That's not us. And cheer or marching band, if they want to do really nice things, then- want to do really nice things, then they won't be required to pay more than the $200 for cheer or marching band. But if they're going to do those really nice things, that's where the fundraising comes in. And they're not required to fundraise. It's just like when we plan our own family vacations or whatever, depending on how much money you have that's expendable, depends on the kind of things you can do. And so, I think from that perspective, that's where it gets really, it's really critical for us to give good guidance to our principals so that they can delineate between what's allowed and what's not. Because when the $200, using cheerleading as an example for high school, for sideline cheer, that's the participation fee, Mr. Mitchell. So, if it costs more than that, it doesn't cost more than that. They're not required to pay more than that fee, that maximum fee that Dr. Looney talked about. And so, if they're going to do more, that money is put in for everybody, not for an individual kid, to be able to go on trips or whatever to competitions at whatever the rate is for that event. It's really complicated.
Mr. Welch?
Ann, I'm glad you brought this up, and I don't want to belabor the point, but it is good that I think we're getting this out there a little bit. Because in addition to these fees, obviously, this is not the end-all, be-all of it either. For anyone who's had a student that's participated in sports, you know that you've purchased jerseys or singlets. I've got a football helmet sitting at home that was not inexpensive. And when we talk about all the funds that our PTOs donate, that's just cash that's given. It doesn't account for an hourly rate of the quite literally tens of thousands of hours that our parents donate every year that aren't calculated in that equation. So, thank God for our public school parents because we just would not be able to operate the school district without you. And I think I personally apologize that we have to ask for these things. I'm sure others on the board, if not all of us here, feel the same way. But just quite frankly, we are not able to operate the school district at the level that you're, that you expect and your children deserve without your assistance. So, we appreciate you, and we will continue to work and try to get there.
Any further discussion on this one? Okay, we have a motion and a second. We have Dr. Looney's recommendation. If you go ahead and record your votes then, please.
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Thank you. The next item is our board policies for first reading. First one is 5.106 on hiring. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is first policy reading. I do recommend approval as submitted.
Anyone like to make a recommendation, motion on this one? Mr. Hall makes the motion. Anyone like to second it? Mr. Welch, second. Okay, thank you. And discussion, Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I had mentioned in our policy meeting, I'm not going to support this adjustment. I am supportive of bringing the two policies together that would have the same timelines be given for the production of the legal materials that this policy is asking for. But I believe 30 days is too short of a period to ask an applicant to go and recover these legal documents. So, as we review this again next month, I'll try to, again, make some adjustments to it, maybe try to find 45 days in between the two. But I personally feel 30 days to get the expungement documentation from some county that you may or may not live in, may have been recent, or it may have been decades previously, is kind of a, can be a difficult barrier to employment.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, I see none. We have a motion and a second, and director's recommendation. If you go ahead and record your votes.
Your vote is 10 yes, 1 no.
Thank you. The next item is policy 6.304 for first reading on anti-harassment. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members. There's some substantial changes recommended to this policy. Some of them are required by law. Some of them are cleaning up. We'd be glad to answer any questions. We had some pretty extensive conversation with this, and this is first reading, so I do recommend approval.
Anyone like to make a motion on this one on first reading? We have Ms. Cleveland making a motion. Anyone like to second? Ms. McGraw, second. Any comments or discussions on this first reading? Okay, I see none. If you go ahead then, record your votes, please.
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Okay, Board members, that ends our agenda for this evening. Yes, Ms. McGraw?
I'm going to point a privilege, please.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not sure who's in charge of this group of young men here, the Boy Scouts. This is the most attentive and engaged group of students I've ever seen throughout a whole school board meeting. So, you guys, thank you for being here. This is painful for most adults to sit through sometimes. You guys were great. So, I hope you, I hope it was helpful.
They kind of froze when they heard how many millions of dollars they're going to be responsible for in the future. Thank you all for coming. This meeting is adjourned.